Okay, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a roll call.
It's something that I just totally connect me.
It's right here.
Thank you.
Oops.
Paul Gonzalez.
Yeah.
John Ewen.
Here.
Lindsay Wolf.
Here.
Rod Kivell.
Here.
Tracy Bartlett.
Here.
Thank you. Does anybody have a conflict? Okay, seeing none. Before we get to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to make a modification on the agenda, and that is that item number nine, which is public comment, should actually be probably number 10 after the business. That's our second public comment, so just switching between nine and 10, that's all.
Support that.
All right. Okay, moved by my Gonzalez, supported by Lindsay, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I was wondering if you were going to say something.
I was waiting for you to say something.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I could say something if I could.
You will.
On page two of our packet, item number four, approval of the minutes November 11th, that should be November 14th. November 11th is a Saturday. So that was already approved last meeting, but just to bring that as a point.
Okay.
The minutes must have the wrong date. Good eye.
All right. That has been corrected. Thank you.
My name is also spelled wrong. Sorry.
We know who you are.
One of these days it'll be right.
How do you want it spelled?
S-E-U-I, please.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted to that February meeting.
You mean the minutes?
Or the minutes. I'm sorry.
I'll support that.
Okay. Motion by Rod, supported by Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll have our first public comment at 6:36. We'll close it at 6:36. Thank you. Okay, any correspondence?
We had one correspondence, Chairman, regarding the public case that's being presented tonight, so.
Thank you. All right. Okay, reports, township?
Yeah, we had our meeting last night, and it was a reports meeting, so not a ton of business, but we did get, if you want to go on and watch it, we did get a present or update on the Flock camera system that has been in place almost a year, and Captain Foulas gave us an update and gave examples of how they've been able to use it over the last year, so that was kind of cool. I thought that was very interesting. Then we also had a report from the road commission, and their website has been updated or renewed, redesigned, and they have a place where you can report a problem or concern on the website, and you can take, you know, if you're doing it with your phone, you can take a picture and attach it to where the pothole is, you can take a picture of that and pin it right on the map and things like that, so they wanted us to encourage everyone to take a look at their new website, and I actually, somebody left us a message today about a pothole in front of their house and didn't leave their phone number, so I'm like, well, I'll try the new website. So I got in, pulled up their address, and pinned it, and said there is a pothole, and it was very easy, so. They also have information about all the roads for each township, so if you go, there's a place for township information, and they will give you the rating of the road and things like that. There's also a section for special assessments and the process, because the road commission is now, I think, going to take the lead on the start of special assessments, and then the township will come in after it's been through the road commission portion. So that's also on there, and we had the Metro Fire Annual Report, and Chief Parker gave the report. It's his last one. He retired on April 1st. He has been with the department for 40 years, so that is quite an accomplishment, and so it was, it was kind of cool. It was his last one, so there is a new chief, Paul Mackin, and he is in place. He worked with Chief Parker for about five weeks, so he's up and running and excited to continue the legacy, so. We also approved the ambulance to run a second ambulance for 17 weeks during the summer, four days a week, so when, when it's busy and high volume, they're going to have two trucks out, especially with the construction and the wait times at the hospital. It has extended the time that they're out of service, and so they're hoping that with having two trucks, one can stay in service while one's at the hospital or trying to make its way there. So we're going to see how that goes this year, and since we have both trucks, we might as well use them, so. Jen's Park, they're working on getting that boardwalk started. That's going to be done this year. They're in the process of finalizing permits and paperwork stuff, so we talked about that and planning and zoning. Claire had put in, I'm probably taking your thunder, sorry. Claire had put in for a grant, Michigan Health Endowment, so it's going to help with the planning aspect of some projects. One is going to be the trails, the non-motorized trails, and it also allows us to have money for, like, specific planning on two projects. So Claire's pretty excited about that. It's a great opportunity, so. And free money is always good, so there's.
So you got the grant?
Applied for it.
Yeah, we were invited, we submitted, like, a conceptual paper, and we're invited to submit a call.
So that's very exciting, so. And then we also agreed to put out an offer and employment to an assessor. We have been, for as long as I've been here, we've been contracting with the county equalization department to do our assessing. We are now kind of mutually agreed upon, because they have some staffing changes that are coming up. Susan retired, one of our assessors, and so we were kind of ready to move out on our own, and they were ready to not service East Bay, so we hired our own assessor, and then he is, I think, starting May 1st, and he is going to be interviewing the assistant assessor, or assessing assistant, I guess is the title, because it's a two office, two person office, and so he's going, Beth and Jim Baker, the county equalization director, and Darren Darga, one of our assessors, interviewed some of the assistants, and Ryan is going to do a second interview, and that way he has some say on who he works with and who he shares an office with, so he's going to be doing that this next week, so before he starts, so, yeah. It was, it was a busy night, but a good night.
Well, Sue, Sue was amazing, so a lot of institutional knowledge.
I know.
But it was amazing, the stuff that she could remember, so.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. It was great to work with her, and I'm sure it will, you know, Ryan and whomever he chooses for his assistant will be just as helpful, and so it'll be good.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the planning commission, we had our meeting April 2nd, and we had three items that came up. One was an expansion of the Timber Ridge Resort area, and that was approved. That was a substantial increase, about 90 more campsites, so that ought to be quite a bit, and they, they're going to be working on that, and that's, that's going to be substantial. It's going to be like over 400 different campsites up there. And in talking to them, they're booked. I mean, they have people just lined up for that. The other item was a change for the Park Shore Hotel, and that was a reduction of the required parking spaces now that we had passed the ability to have more flexibility on parking, so they came forward and said, you know, we've had these parking spaces that we've always had, we've never used them, we'd like to reduce that, and that was also approved. And then we had a site plan discussion for the area, which is the Brigantine Housing Development, that has gone through a couple of iterations and never really happened, so now we're talking about another possible development of a substantial number of single-family homes on a rental basis, and that's, that's something that we can expect to probably see in the near future, if probably not the next meeting, I'm sure. So that was what we had with the planning commission. It was a pretty good meeting. Okay. How about the planning and zoning department?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. I know it's been a few months. So just wanted to give you a few quick updates. One important update is the zoning ordinance rewrite, so I know you've been kind of aware of that. Lindsay has volunteered and served on our subcommittee, but we have the full ordinance draft is ready. It's on the website, so if you want to take a look at the draft, I'd encourage you to take a look at the website. It's also in the upcoming planning commission packets, but planning commission had their first work session in March. They have their next works, special work session in April, and then another one in May. We're looking at having a joint session with the township board in June, and then scheduling a public hearing after that. So I think with the, with the ZBA, it's really important and helpful to get your feedback on what areas of the zoning ordinance aren't working that well, what types of variances or appeals are you seeing regularly that maybe we need to take a look at, that maybe we've missed, so definitely would welcome your input and feedback on the, on the draft. Other quick update, we just, in mid-March, we had a new temporary position start with planning and zoning departments. We have another fellow. It's a sustainability fellow. He's funded through the Michigan Healthy Climate Corps, and it's a new program that's supporting local units of government, nonprofits, conservancies, different groups throughout the state of Michigan. We're actually the only township that's hosting a climate fellow, but he's helping us on a number of different initiatives, including looking at our septic policy, different policy options related to septics, looking at our stormwater ordinance and green infrastructure opportunities, and then also looking at, he's got great GIS skills, so he's looking, doing an analysis of our tree canopy cover and looking at percentages by district to kind of help us set some goals for preservation of tree canopy cover, so. And last, last quick update, we are getting ready, we're kicking off the public phase of the Beach District visioning, so you'll all receive some communications. We're going to have a survey going out, and we're going to have a design, a week-long community design charat in May focused on the Beach District, which is the US 31 corridor in East Bay Township, so everyone's invited to engage in that process, and we're excited about it.
What day will that be, Claire?
That is going to be, it's the week of May 13th, so we're going to have stakeholder meetings, meetings with private property owners, different agencies throughout that whole week. We are going to have public meetings the evening of May 14th and 16th, public open houses, and those are going to be at Harbor Brook Hall, right on the corridor. So, and I will, we will, we are going to be sending out communications, schedule, postcards soon, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Claire? Okay, thanks again. Okay, on to the business before the zoning board, and Bill?
Thank you, Chairman Gonzalez. I have an application for a variance that was given to us, this appeal 124. The parcel identification number is 2803-419-04100. It's for a dimensional variance, and the applicant, Michael Gudrow, and owner, and Dave Heim, the builder, is here with us tonight. The parcel address is 3824 Forest Lakes Drive. The parcel size is 1.6 acres. It's in a lakes area zoning district, and the intent of this district is to establish and maintain a low intensity residential and recreational environment predominantly for single-family dwellings in accessibly, accessible rural areas adjacent to the inland lakes of the township. So the setback requirements for the fronts 30 feet, the sides 10 feet, and the rear is 35 feet. All of the adjacent zoning to the north, south, and east are lakes area residential. Include some overviews of the property, pictures of the property with a staff report for the variance. Chairman Gonzalez, would you like me to read into the staff report?
Please.
So, "The applicant is seeking a front yard setback to construct a 24-by-30 attached garage. A 30-foot setback from the front yard is required. See East Bay Charter Township's ordinance, section 505, table 1. Variance is the board shall have the power to authorize upon an appeal specific variances from such requirements as lot area and width regulations, building height regulations, yard and depth regulations, and off-street parking and loading space requirements, provided it finds that all of the basic conditions and any one of the specific conditions set forth herein can be satisfied. Basic conditions," that's under A, "the board shall find that the variance request meets all of the following conditions. One, the requested variance shall not be contrary to public interest or to the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Not satisfied. The building of an attached garage within a 30-foot front yard setback is contrary to public interest and intent and purpose of the ordinance. Locating buildings inside of the 30-foot front yard setback limits site distance views from adjoining property owners, decreases home security, public safety, and disallows a uniform appearance throughout the district. The requested variance shall not permit establishment within a district of any use which is not permitted by right within that zoning district, or any use or dimensional variance for which a special land use is permit, permit is required. Satisfied. An attached garage is a permitted use. Three, the requested variance shall not cause a substantial adverse effect upon properties in immediate vicinity or in a district in which the property of the applicant is located. Satisfied. The majority of the properties surrounding 3824 Forest Lakes Drive meet or, and or exceed the required front yard setback. Those that do not meet the required setback have severe site topography constraints, site constraints found at this site limit the placement of an attached garage. Four, the conditions or situations which necessitate, necessitate, I'm sorry, the requested variance is not so general or of such recurrent nature as to make the formulation of a general, general regulation for such conditions reasonably practical. Satisfied. The variance necessary to build the detached garage is not so general to cause an amendment in the ordinance. The property has site constraints that limit the placement of the proposed attached garage." I almost need a drink of water, sorry. "Five, the requested variance," it's okay, thanks, "the requested variance shall relate only to the property that is under control of the applicant. Satisfied. The specific variance request relates only to the property under control by the applicant owner. Six, the requested variance shall not be necessitated, necessitated by any self-created condition or action taken by the applicant or property owner. Not satisfied. The requested variance was a self-created condition or action taken by the applicant or property owner. There is already a two-car garage, and the property owners are requesting additional space. Seven, there is no reasonable alternative location on the parcel for the proposed improvements for which a variance is sought. Not satisfied." Thank you, Claire. "Not satisfied. If the property owners had originally built an attached garage, there would be no need for a variance to existing accessory buildings on-site to restrict building an attached garage. Special conditions, when all of the foregoing basic conditions can be satisfied, a variance may be granted when any one of the following special conditions can be clearly demonstrated, considering that not all of the conditions 127 are met, none of the following special conditions are applicable." So I put in these, one, two, and three. One, not applicable. Two, not evaluated. And three, not evaluated, so.
Thank you.
I thought it would be best for the board to consider those conditions, so that's why.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have the applicant up here, please?
Sure.
Do you want to address the board?
Sure. Mike Gudrow, 3824 Forest Lakes Drive. Thanks for your time tonight. I realize that I already have a garage, and the garage is, has worked well for many, many years, but I can't really get to the garage well anymore. As we get older, we need something closer to the house. When I built the garage back in 1979, 1980, something like that, it worked well. It was all I could afford at the time, and I, you know, I brought some fill in, and we built the garage on top of the hill, and now if I, if I try to build another garage attached to my house, it's got to be in the front of the house because of the topography of the, of the parcel. There's really no other place to put a garage and be able to access it from my main living area, so I'm asking for a variance in order to build something that will allow my wife and I to live in the house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one other, I have another couple of signatures from neighbors that were not opposed. I think one of those you might already have. One of them was over at the, at the meeting of the halls. My knowledge, there's nobody objecting to it, and I've got drawings you can all look at. Did you look at them already? Any other questions?
No, but, but give you an opportunity to address the board, and if there's questions, we'll come right back to you. At this point, we usually have a public hearing for discussion on the, on the issue. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board from the public?
This one.
Okay. So that starts at, call it 6:55.
Excuse me. My name is Dave Heim, and I'm a friend of Mike Gudrow, and I'm also a residential builder designer, and in this garage we're looking at, trying to get it to be that main floor living and have the laundry and everything on the same level, and that not go up and down the stairs. The setback is the thing in question, is that right now it's showing up as 43 feet, and at 43 feet, which is an odd setback, is the issue where we have the 10-feet laws. So general setbacks are normally 33 feet in residential. There's something, and I've heard some comments in regards to some utility easement potentially a part of that as well, and I know, Bill, you were looking at that when we talked the last time? I don't know if you found anything out, what that, if there was something about utilities in that? Okay. So, you know, the thing, I guess, was more of a, the setback issue and why it was done that way, and I don't know of any other setback that way in the township, in the township, is there? I don't think there is. It doesn't want to be in that area or the subdivision that's just due to the south. Anyways, that's, that's my concern. It's just that, just bringing that up, and that's part of the, the issue where we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going, going, okay, well.
Chairman Gonzalez, one letter from the public. When would you like to?
Okay, want to enter that? Go ahead.
Read that into?
Sure, go ahead.
This was received from Brian Roth, who owns a house, and, so he says, "I'm the owner of the house next door to 3782," so he owns the house at 3825 Forest Lakes Drive. "To petitioners of the variance, I have reviewed the public documents for the variance request concerning 3824 Forest Lakes Drive. I understand the desire to have an attached garage to one's home due to our northern Michigan climate and possibly other factors. What I don't like about the plan is the position of the garage in front of the house, which is not, not standard for the homes in that neighborhood and not conforming per setback code. Additionally, the home has several outbuildings already, and new structure would be a third outbuilding, which doesn't fit the typical home garage layout for the neighborhood." That was from Brian Roth, Atomic Properties LLC, so he owns a house.
Thank you.
3825 Forest Lakes Drive.
Okay. Any other items for entry?
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the, the public hearing at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Comments, recommendations?
I have a question.
Sure.
Because I wasn't able to attend the site visit at the time. I was just curious as to where the asphalt is located on the side of the house, if you're looking at page 19 of the packet. Is it possible to place the garage over in that location?
Please.
I believe you have a picture of that.
She's looking at your, she's looking at page 19.
Page 19.
So that's what she's looking at. She's trying to.
Wouldn't see that drive.
So like, I've got.
So I think there's some pictures in there. So here's a good picture. This is a picture, this is a picture standing over here, looking this way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And if you see it, the, the house drops, there's a hole here, so the only place that's high enough.
So, the only place that's high enough to put a garage attached to the upper level is back in front here.
Without bringing in some infill or something of that nature?
Well, here's the, here's the driveway going down the hole. Here's the, the second level of the house. We're trying to attach up here, and this, so this is flat, this is, it slopes away, the topography of the, of the property. That doesn't really show you too much, but it shows you're, you're a lot flatter, a lot closer to the level here than you are back in the hole here. Doesn't really show you anything else.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess I would just, Bill, I did this at the, at the meeting, but there's a garage there that was built back in the 70s, I believe.
Year 79, he thinks it was 80. He thinks the permit was issued in 80, and so it was probably 1980.
That's, that's well within the, the setback or the, the setback, but there was no variance, probably no ordinance for setback.
I'm sure when I got that permit, I had drawings showing what I was doing, and it was approved. The location was approved. I know, you know, I think I had a variance, but.
To Chairman Gonzalez, to answer the question, John is asking me if you don't mind, then, yeah, he's, ask if there was a variance, right?
Right.
And if I found a building permit for the project 1980 for the garage that's up by the road, I didn't find any evidence in our hard copy of, or in the files in our data of a variance. There was that bill permit 19 issued, 80, that was issued for the two-car garage that sits within the right-of-way.
The question is, was the ordinances in place in 1980?
That's what I was wondering. That's what I was wondering as well.
That's a good.
Well.
May I answer the question? I've been, I'm sorry. Dave Heim, in the building industry, is that part of it? I've been in this since 82, and the land use has always been a requirement of having a permit. And you can't do anything without that permit to get a building permit. So, that process of going through a health permit and the soil erosion and/or what have you is needed in order to get the land use permit. From that, you take everything to get the building permit. So, I know for a fact in 80, we were still dealing with that, or had that. So, that's not a, I know that's something spun since when I started in this business. So, thank you.
Regardless of that, I mean, that doesn't really have a bearing on this request.
No.
So, yeah, curious.
Wondering what the, what the reasoning would have been for the, for the variance.
Right.
Why a garage wasn't built back then in the house.
Because I didn't, I was a lot younger.
We'll be young forever, right?
You know, I had $2,000, so I built a garage.
So, with the basic conditions not being met, there's not really a way we can approve this, correct?
Well, we can, we can still go back and approve it even if there's not being met, but we can, we can say that they're met if we have reasons to say they're met, I believe, but.
Says, if you don't mind, Chairman Gonzalez, the special conditions, when all of the foregoing basic conditions can be satisfied, a variance may be granted when any one of the following special conditions can be clearly demonstrated, and that'd be questions 1, 2, 3, I believe. So, if one of those can be clearly demonstrated, that means the requirements, I believe, that you could grant a variance request, even with the, some of the foregoing not satisfied.
The basic conditions all have to be met and one of the special conditions in order to approve a variance. Sorry.
The.
So, I guess unless we change the decision on the basic conditions and then find a special condition that can be met, then, then we can move forward, so.
The problem that, that we have is that when you're dealing with a variance, you're dealing with the property of, of the, of the, of the issue. And when you then start making variances, you know, it starts the precedent, states a precedent as to what other things could happen for other people in that area. The, the, shall I say, the, the human factor at this point, the age factor, is, is not, it's a reason why you want to do it, but it's not a reason with respect to the land and the property. So, we have to kind of put that aside and look at the, the physical nature of the property versus the ordinance, and, and does the ordinance apply? And that's, that's the issue that we have to look at, not, not so much the, I don't want to say the emotional, the, the human issue part, the convenience issue part, as opposed to the actual property and the, what goes with, with the land. That's, that's the thing that we have to settle here, and in the write-up, three of those conditions of the seven were not satisfied, and that, that becomes the biggest hurdle. But the, the biggest hurdle of all within the items not satisfied is whether or not the individual or the person is the one instigating, causing the issue. Is it, is it, is it not, is it something that you are working with because of the configuration of the property, or is it something that you want? And that's, that's the one that is probably the most important of dealing with the variance. Is it, is it something that you can control? And at this particular point, yes, you can control it, and that's why the issue was not satisfied. And that's the thing that I'm looking at here, but that's my opinion and thoughts. Any, anybody else? Rod, any thoughts?
This is, it's really a tough, a tough position.
I grant you.
And, and there, over the years, some things have happened, and garage was built, the original garage on the house was down that hill and into the old building, then that driveway, that asphalt driveway, and one of the reasons, you know, when you look at it, the whole front of that property is going to become driveways.
Mm-hmm.
The whole front. I don't know if the county's going to approve that. I don't know those rules. I haven't read up on those. I don't know them, but the whole front of that property has to remain driveways because the covered carport back here has got a trailer in it. That asphalt driveway going down there needs to be maintained to get that out. So, that garage has been walled in and is part of the home, and then we're going to put another home in front of us, so you're going to bring another 24 feet out to the road. I, I just don't know. I'm, I'm struggling with that working.
Uh-huh.
That's what I'm seeing, and, and again, that does, with the neighbor, that does change the look of that, front of that house, becomes three separate driveways.
Well, and as I meant, I didn't drive through the whole street, I, you know, as I was going out, most of those homes are for, you know, are quite a ways off the road. So, this would bring it much closer, which is out of character for the area. But, yeah, I'm, you know, I was the same thing. If we could put the garage down in front of the one under the house, then that'd be great, but if that's not where you want your living quarters to be, then, sorry, then that's your personal issue, and. Sorry, my cold's getting to me.
I agree with Tracy. I did a drive-by through the neighborhood as well, and I looked at some aerial imagery, and I feel like the placement of this garage would be very out of character with what currently exists in that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
John?
I agree with that. I kind of went through, as I was walking around through there, driving through, it looks like most of the houses were setback, although you've done a great job on, on doing stuff with that hilly.
Yeah, you have a beautiful piece of property, yeah.
But I, I feel the same. I, you know, it's, I appreciate the fact that getting older, you want a single-four living. I just, you know, it just doesn't, the things that aren't satisfied in the, in the seven conditions, I, I don't see how we could possibly approve this.
Can I, can I interject something? I don't understand what, why they weren't satisfied. What? What isn't satisfied?
I mean, it's spelled out right here. You want to build into the 30-foot setback.
Right, right, right.
Which is not allowed, so.
So, why, why am I even allowed to apply for a variance?
If there were, if there were a hardship, if there were no other place on the property to put a garage, then you may have been able to get the variance, but there is places. It's just not conducive to what you want to do inside the house, so, which I totally respect and totally agree with. It's just unfortunate that we can't get you a garage on that same level.
Yeah. You are entitled at any time to apply for a variance. That's, that's within your right to do that, and.
You're not going to give it to my client.
Well, because, because when you apply for the, for the variance, they look at, we look at issues, and we have set rules that we go by with respect to the ordinance and the, the, the property. But we, we don't do that unless somebody applies for a variance. You still have to go through the process to be unbiased as to what, what the, the property request is relative to the different conditions that are set by the, by the township. That's, that's what that is. But from a standpoint of your right, that is your right to do that. Is there any other thoughts, comments? Then I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that, based on staff recommendations, that basic conditions, three of the basic conditions, namely 1, 6, and 7, have not been satisfied, and therefore the special conditions were not evaluated, that this variance not be approved.
Support.
Okay. That's moved by John to not approve the variance, supported by Lindsay. May I have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we don't have anything else, so we will have the second public hearing starting at 7:14. Seeing no one, we will close it at 7:14. All right. We have motion through adjourned.
I just make one comment.
Yes, please.
I will not be available for the May 14th meeting. Acme has a township board meeting that same night, so if the alternate could come in my place, that would be fantastic.
Okay. And thank you for reminding me, we have to announce that the upcoming meeting is Tuesday on May 14th, of which Lindsay will not be there. Okay. And I guess with that, we're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.